Okay, today is Tuesday, March 10th, 2020. I call the Village Board meeting order. Would a clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik?
Here.
Trustee Fechter?
Here.
Trustee Listner?
Here.
Trustee Prakno?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
We do have a quorum tonight, so we can go ahead. Tonight, we have the invocation of Pastor Petusnik from the Christus Victor Lutheran Church, and the Pledge Allegiance, so if everyone could please rise. Pastor, if you would, please.
I pray. Jesus said, "Let the little children come to me, and do not stop them, for it is to such as these that the kingdom of heaven belongs." And he laid his hands on them, and went on his way. Today, we lift up our prayers in thanksgiving for all the children in Elk Grove, who are honored for all they do to make this community remarkable. Jesus blessed the children as an example for their faith, and to them, the kingdom of God belongs. Help all of us to have faith like children, especially in challenging and trying times. During this Lenten season, we are reminded that Jesus himself went through trying times on his journey to the cross. Loving God, you promised us over and over again that you will not leave us, but be with us, no matter what life brings us. We are grateful for all the support and help we received in the past to bring us here today. In Psalm 27, it says, "The Lord is my light and my salvation; whom shall I fear? The Lord is my stronghold of my life; of whom shall I be afraid?" I pray that you ignite faith in all of us, that we can work together here in Elk Grove for the common good, and build beloved communities, as Martin Luther King Jr. envisioned. Ignite our faith, that we can see the need and opportunities of our times to make this neighborhood better. May this meeting tonight be an expression for the love we feel for this community. Let us all pray together the prayer that Jesus taught us. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Scouts, if you'll help me, the flag's there, where are the scouts back there? Lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. Scouts, go ahead. Aye?
Aye.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Pastor, hang on a second.
Good meeting, Pastor, but I want to thank you. Your support over the past several months meant the world to me, and I know many others, and so I want to thank you for everything. And you did, you took care of us. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes of February 25th, 2020. Any a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2020, and dispense with the reading.
Second. We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let's direct show and ask approval. Because we have all these young folks here tonight, we're going to have a lot of presentations, we're going to take a couple of things out of order with the board's concurrence. First off, we'll get the consent agenda done first. So tonight, we have consent agenda items, A as in Apple, through K as in Mr. Nikovakar Praxis, the Kangaroo Court. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, Lori, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Fechter?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes five, nothing. The other item is, we do have some folks here for a plant commission here. We had Mr. Romo, instead of you folks don't mind making him wait all this time, which he did last year, had someone for the zoning board, said, I think, for like almost two hours. And so we'll go ahead and get the plant commission. Go ahead, Mr. Romo.
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Trustees. You should have received a finding of fact from the plant commission pertaining to a business from Schiller Park moving to Elk Grove. The business is named Elk Grove Automotive. They specifically would like to move to 2382 United Lane, which is in the DuPage County section of Elk Grove, and the heavy industry, heavily industry zone district located near O'Hare Airport. In order to do this, they need a special use permit to be issued by the village, so the plant commission held a public hearing and voted unanimously for Elk Grove Automotive to receive a special use permit, and that recommendation came to the mayor and board of trustees with the one subject condition, and that is the fence be installed in the rear of the property. If you find this acceptable, a motion to direct the village attorney to prepare the necessary documents would be in order, and I believe the petitioners are here in the audience somewhere. Should you have any questions? Thank you.
Trustees, any questions for them? It was unanimous approval. You're fine with the recommendation for the fence? No problem. Any questions, comments, concern? Okay, I need a motion to direct attorney to prepare the necessary documents.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Listner, a second by trustee Fechter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let's show, unanimous approval. Folks, you're set to go. Now, two weeks from tonight, the board will formally adopt it. You do not need to return. It's just a formality, since it was unanimously approved by the plant commission and tonight by the board. You're good to go. You can start early if you want to. You don't have to wait two weeks. All you got to do is work with Ms. Pye's department, get the necessary permits, get going. We want to thank you. We thank you for being part of the community. We thank you for working on the plant commission, and looking to expand, do better with your business. We appreciate that. We appreciate you choosing Elk Grove. So, we thank you for coming tonight. So, you're good to go, and you can go now if you want to, by all means. Thank you very much. With that said, we now move on to the mayor's and trustee's report. We got a lot of presentations for the trustee, or mayor's report tonight. Real quick, meetings we've had, we had an informational town hall meeting back on February 26th. Actually, filled the chambers here, the meeting room E was filled, the thing, it was a great turnout, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, but it was great to have an opportunity to hear from so many residents, have residents had an opportunity to hear the facts on things, instead of just reading stuff people put out. I won't say the word with the kids here, but we appreciate that opportunity, appreciate the support here in the community. We also had, I had the ability to give a state of the village address to the Rotary Club on the 27th, and always appreciate talking to Rotary Club, working with Rotary Club. They do a lot of good for the community, and Rotary Fest is not that far off coming up for the Rotary Club, so we enjoyed doing that. Also, we had our volunteer appreciation dinner last Thursday. That's the night where the community comes together, the board, and the people that volunteer their time here in Elk Grove. People don't realize the amount of people that have volunteered to help Elk Grove, from cert people. You see them at the concerts, directing people, traffic and all the rest. You see them at the parade, you see them in a lot of village events. These people give their time up to help make Elk Grove one smoother, better of our events we have. We got plant commission members, zoning board members, police and fire commission members. We have a lot of different people volunteering a lot of different ways for Elk Grove, making it a better community, and that's our way to say thank you to all the hours they put in for this community. There's a volunteer positions, but without them being filled by these people, a village would nowhere be the community that we have, and we're so proud of. So, we had that opportunity that day, and then, of course, we got the youth celebration. We go and do a little bit more there. In a few minutes, I'm going to be talking to the fire chief down there, because we got a very special award that we're very proud, one of only, what, 220 or so in the whole country? 220 fire departments in the entire country only have this, and there's tens of thousands of fire departments and fire districts. That's impressive, chief, looking forward to that. Before I get to those, an update, I know everyone's talking about the coronavirus. It's a topic of conversation, a lot of people. Obviously, we're not worried, we're all here tonight, everything's going good, but it's not that we are not staying on top of it. Our staff has been having meetings. We meet and discuss with other towns, Cook County, the state of Illinois. There are things being put in place, and things being ready for it, you know, and we're getting prepared, and I'll give you some phone numbers and emails if you got further questions. The big question is, people want to know, what is corvi- or?
Corona.
Coronavirus, thank you. It's a respiratory illness that can be spread from person to person, kind of like a cold, kind of like the flu. It's a new strain that's been identified in humans. That Corona, or COVID-19, is a strain out there, this is a new strain that came off of that. The symptoms, fever, cough, and shortness of breath. The big thing on that illness is, it's a very big respiratory type illness. That's why they tell older people, people over the age of 60 who have underlying conditions, heart disease, diabetes, cancer, other illnesses, the more susceptible to it, and it can impact them more. So, young people tend to get by, if they do get it, very lightly. So, young people, this one time, it's really good, but it's a lot of times it'd be good to be young, but this one time'd be good too, to be young. So, but it really affects older people far more, so they tell you, of course, wash your hands, I'm glad the stuff, I'm sure you heard it, where this come with the state and county pushing forward. Again, wash your hands a lot, not just for two seconds, as much as possible, use a hand sanitizer, have the alcohol base with people, like we were doing a lot tonight, fist bump people, instead of shaking hands, that removes like 90% chance of the risk by doing that. Avoid touching the face, your eyes, your mouth, and all that. Please cover like this if you sneeze, cough, and clean as much can your surface, all that. But if you have more questions, obviously, we're staying on top as much as possible. The concern we have, and we saw this in some hospitals, is people get quarantined if they either have it, or have been exposed to it, and our fear is this, we got all these fine men and women that serve us for police and fire. If they're exposed to it, they could be put out of commission for a while during the quarantine time. We need these guys to serve us, so by you taking better care of yourself, will help protect our guys, so they can take better care of you. So, please, practice good hygiene, good health, so that we can continue to serve you the way we want to, and the way you deserve to be served. If you got questions, the Illinois Department of Health has two things, a hotline phone number, 1-800-889-3931, that's 1-800-889-3931, or you can go on their email at D as in David, P as in Paul, H as in Harry, dot, S as in Sam, I as in Indiana, C as in Charlie, K as in Kangaroo, at illinois.gov. So, it's dph.sick@illinois.gov, and they'll give you out more information. If you want to go to the Federal Center of Disease Control, you go on www.cdccharliedavidcharlie.gov, G-O-V slash cor-
Coronavirus.
Coronavirus. So, that's the things available. We'll stay as on top as we can. If we get more information, we'll get it out through our newsletters, we'll put it on Channel 6, we'll put it on our website, we'll put it on our electronic signs, anything you need to know. But again, do not panic, it is not as prevalent as all the flu and stuff is, but we're not sure about it, so we're going to err on the side of caution. So, anything at all, always err on the side of caution. If you're not feeling good, stay away from people. If you have a lot of seniors you know, be protective of them. So, that's the update, we can fight on that. Another statement I'd like to say is about the Makers One at Bahamas Bowl. As you know, our, we had a two-year contract, we know for a third year came up on March 1st, and the village did not renew the contract with the Makers One at Bowl. We're very proud of him. Title sponsor for the Makers One at Bahamas Bowl for the last two years, and we're very thankful to the Bahamian people, the Bahamian government, for the warmth and hospitality. ESPN was phenomenal to work with, Richard Giannani, Lee Miller, all great people we worked with to make the Makers One at Bahamas Bowl the success it's been. When we entered into this partnership a couple of years ago, we said we wanted to use this platform to tout our village, how good we're going, and how well everything's going here in Elk Grove, and it gave us that opportunity, and we were excited to do that. We also were trying to think of outside the box of something unique to do, and we did. That was something that was never done before, and as obviously we're seeing, this got worldwide exposure. When we made the announcement back in July of 2018, it was all over the world. I mean, it was in the three biggest newspapers in India. It got out there, and that was our intent from the very beginning, to spread the word about Elk Grove Village. And then in 2019, we were able to show a direct connection from the bowl game to a business choosing Elk Grove. If everyone remembers, that was Love's Fueling Station, which is moving along very well, and hopefully, once MWRD gives them a permit, that we start in construction very soon. That was a sign of tangible results from that unique, out-of-the-box marketing of doing the Bahamas Bowl. So, again, that made international news. Actually, I think when we made that announcement with Love's, that was in the largest newspaper in China. Close to a billion people saw that. Now, you say, why is that? Well, China and America does a lot of business back and forth. A lot of Chinese-Americans are here, a lot of American-Chinese are here, I mean, it's a lot of connection, so it was good that way. But like any marketing plan, as time goes on, it evolves, it changes, and we are feeling that the board was, it's time to look on to another way of promoting this community beyond the Makers One at Bahamas Bowl. We thank everyone that was involved in it, very much so. We appreciate the great response we got, the great visibility we got, the getting our word out, Elk Grove is now worldwide known, and obviously, we're looking forward to other ways to get the word out about Elk Grove, so I'm sure you're going to be hearing some new ideas in the very near future. So, but in closing, we do want to thank again, the Bahamian people, the Bahamian government, ESPN, Richard and Lee, for working with us jointly, coming together for something that was truly unique, one of a kind. As John McDonough, who I consider probably the number-one sports marketing guru in the world, said, "It was a genius move by this community and Bahamas to join together for this unique partnership," and both gained a lot out of it, and we're excited to be part of it. So, we will not be renewing the contract, we'll be moving on, and we want to make sure the public knew that immediately, once the board made the decision. So, that is complete. Also, would like to talk about a ruling that occurred two weeks ago, and hopefully, this will be the last time we discuss this topic, and obviously, that was the retroactive term limit that was attempted to be placed on our ballot, that the Supreme Court removed from the ballot. Back on February 26th, almost two weeks ago, matter of fact, the same day that we had a town hall meeting, the Illinois Supreme Court ruled unanimously, six to nothing, that the retroactive term limit question was in violation of state law. State law was very clear when it said it cannot be a retroactive term limit question, and struck it from the ballot. The same ruling that the local election board found. When the local election board struck it from the ballot, Mr. Burns and his group filed legal challenges against it, and it went to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court unanimously, in other words, it was a slam dunk, said no, the question could not stay on the ballot, it was removed. Now, the hope is, and it's kind of ironic, if remember, we talked about for the past nine months, unfortunately, about those anonymous mailings with a lot of lies, trying to deceive people, mislead people, they magically have stopped all of a sudden, and the anonymous people are trying to explain that they weren't part of this question. Obviously, they stopped as soon as the Supreme Court said no, couldn't be on the ballot. So, obviously, they were tied together. The bad part is, it's not done. The Supreme Court ruled at 3:30 on Wednesday, the question's off the ballot. 11:30 that night, that group came back again for more FOIAs. In other words, like they've done the last nine months, looking for information, to put in their pieces, they FOIA'd us eight hours after the Supreme Court said it's off the ballot. Then the next day, Thursday, they followed up on a FOIA they had going with my son's accident. So, they're not done, unfortunately, but I feel, this board feels, and more importantly, this community should feel very good. This community came together like it has never done before, like it's never done before. Just drive around town and see all the signs that were up. The town hall meeting, over 200 people filled these rooms, even after the set was off, to hear about what's going on with these anonymous mailings and all the rest, to get the truth. Still came. I had a senior luncheon five days later, over 40 seniors showed up, because they wanted to hear again. This community united like never before, the emails we've gotten since the decision, the calls, people coming up towards different areas, I've never seen it before. That's what I was talking about for the last nine months. That's Elk Grove. What we saw coming together, what we saw joining together, that's this village. That's what we're so proud of, and that's what's unique about our community. These young people here today, they're unique, what about Elk Grove, what we do here, how we join together and stand together. We did it when we beat the airport, stopped them from moving into our community, we did it again this time. We joined together, and on behalf of this community, I thank everyone. I never thought we'd see this, I always thought times have changed, we haven't. Elk Grove is unique, and it's going to always stay unique. So, thank you to this community, thank you for standing together, we can do what's right, we can make a difference, and that's why Elk Grove is the exceptional community, and always will be. So, I appreciate it. My prayers, I know Pastor Stefan left, our prayers are, we don't hear again from them, they do go away, they leave us alone, and let Elk Grove be the little utopia that we know we are, and we can move on. So, that, Mr. Nikovakar, should hopefully be the last we ever talk about it, right?
I only hope so.
If there's a God, and I think there is, Pastor Stefan told us there was.
I just said there was.
So, we'll be good. So, with that complete, one last thing, Mr. Romo, I won't forget, we have our special spring leaf pickup. Remember, we said we had one last year, because with the early winter, we had, remember Halloween, we all went out with six inches of snow, hard to pick up all the leaves, we tried again all the way up to December, but in case you got some left over, we're going to do a one-week leaf pickup, like we did last year in December, it'll be the week of April 6th through 10th. So, if you're going to have it out by 7:00 a.m. Monday morning, April 6th, any leaves out in the street, just like you normally do in the fall, our guys, Kobe's department, will do another great job, they'll come by, they'll pick them all up, we don't know exactly what, when your street be hit, so put them out on that Monday morning, leave them out all week, hopefully, we don't get a snow, but if, you know, they'll come by and pick up all the leaves again, it went real well last year, we want to do it again, it's going to probably be something we do every year now, because it's very popular with people. So, again, we'll try to keep doing the late leaf pickup, and we'll do the early leaf pickup. So, that'll be in our newsletter coming out next week, and we'll put it on our website and other places, but April 6th, April 10th, we'll have a special leaf pickup. So, with that, chief, you want to talk about another good thing about Elk Grove here?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Rich Michael, I'm the fire chief here in Elk Grove Village, and I'm very happy to talk about a program here this evening that the fire department just participated in. On Tuesday, March 3rd, village manager Ray Rumel and a team from the fire department appeared in front of a team of commissioners from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, down at their annual conference. The commission was first organized back in 1987, and it has 11 members that represent a cross-section of fire and emergency services from across the United States, Canada, and other countries as well. Those agencies that are represented by the commission include municipal and county fire departments and fire districts, municipal and county managers, labor organizations, including the International Association of Firefighters, standards and development organizations, including the National Fire Protection Association, and last but certainly by no means least, the United States Department of Defense. The commission's mission is to lead fire and emergency services to excellence through continuous quality improvement, which comes through the process of accreditation, credentialing, and continuing education. This fire service accreditation process was first developed by the commission, has been in place since 1996. So, this hearing that we participated in last week was the final step in the evaluation of where the fire department stands today. So, through this two-year process, the fire department completed its first strategic plan, to give you some idea, some of the documents that were included, developed our first strategic plan, as well as a complete community risk assessment, by which members of the fire department went out and evaluated the potential risk in the community associated with fire loss, natural disasters, and other types of risks that we might experience. Through that risk assessment, then what was done was what we called the standards of cover. We created response plans on how the fire department would respond to each one of those levels of risks, and each one of those categories that could impact the community here. We did the risk assessment, the standards of cover. After that, thank you, Mayor, the final document that we completed was 10 categories of a fire and emergency services self-assessment document. 10 categories in here, 232 performance indicators, by which the fire department answered, what are we doing today, how well is it serving our community, and what is our plan for the future? These documents were then submitted to the commission for their evaluation, and once approved, they sent a team of assessors out here to validate in person that the things we had written about here in the community were actually taking place. That assessment took place in November of last year, and we were viewed favorably by the team of assessors that came here, which brought us to the hearing in March. Being awarded the accreditation status is a positive reflection on the current status of the department, but more importantly, it provides a framework for what we want to do for the future. It shows that we're doing a good job today, but based on the plans that we've developed for the future, and the continuous self-assessment and self-improvement model, it will lead to better operations, better administrative practices, and better financial planning for the future for the department. So, that's what we're pretty excited about. If we look at some of the numbers, as the mayor said, there's 29,000 fire departments in the United States of America. There's about 1,100 here in the state of Illinois. Elk Grove Village is now the 16th fire department to be accredited in the state of Illinois, and we're left 41, there's 41 of us in the Great Lakes region across the country, and actually internationally, there's 270 fire departments that are accredited. So, we're in a very small portion of agencies across the world that have participated successfully in this process. Other agencies have participated, but not everybody's been successful in completing the process, because again, it's not a rubber stamp, you have to prove yourself that what you're doing is working. The process doesn't end here either. We've received the accredited status from the commission, as we stand today, but each year, we'll be required to submit an annual compliance report to update the commission on what we're doing for continuous improvement, continued assessment, and then every five years, we'll have another site visit, and another hearing by which members of the department will appear in front of the commission to validate our status. So, it's not something that we do one time, it's not a project, it's an ongoing process for continuing self-improvement for the department. So, we're very excited about this. Some members of the accreditation team are here with us today, some are on duty, some are off duty, so you see some different uniforms, but the process itself was coordinated by Battalion Chief Nathan Gack, and I'm not sure if he's still here, he had some other commitment tonight, so I see heads going like this. So, Battalion Chief Nathan Gack was our accreditation manager. Like any good process, when you have a team, when you have a band, when you have an orchestra, somebody's got to make sure that we're all playing the same song at the same time, at the same speed, and he did a tremendous job of organizing that process for the department. He was assisted by Lieutenant Dave Hoppy, who was our assistant accreditation manager, firefighter paramedic Mike Foster, our data guy, firefighter paramedic Joe Albert, who did a tremendous job of pulling our information together, data analysis of our incident statuses, our response times, and everything associated with those, Deputy Chief Lance Harris, who unfortunately is not able to be with us tonight either, Battalion Chief Mark Perkadani, Battalion Chief Mike Keenan, Battalion Chief Clint Coons, our fire marshal, Jason Stadle in the back, taking care of our community risk reduction process, along with Lieutenant Jim Dennett Jr., and Battalion Chief Michael Sharp, who coordinates the paramedic program for the department. So, these folks, along with other members of the department, too numerous to mention, and various members of city staff, from the village clerk's office to the finance department, the community development, public works, the village manager's office, everybody pitched together to make this program work. So, thank you for the continued support that the fire department receives, both from the community, from our elected officials as well, and with that, it gives me great pleasure to share the accredited award, agency award, with Mayor Johnson, on behalf of the Elk Grove Village Fire Department. with Mayor Johnson on behalf of the Elk Grove Village Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Hang on.
Uh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, Chief, all you guys, come on down. Come on. Fire department guys, come on. No, no, they're going down center. Go down, they're going down center, they'll be good. Let's get up here with the chief. Just like all the young ones are gonna get, I should give them a chocolate too, right? Oh, yeah, definitely. Better keep them going tonight, congratulations. Thank you.
Wait, wait, correct. Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Johnson. We have two more coming down.
Oh, wait, I have one. Come on, guys. Give him a hand again. Ladies? Now, as we, uh, get ready to recognize the young people as community, it shows, especially young people. Fireman's a great job, firewoman, that's a great job to have. Policeman, policewoman, uh, we use them all. But that's just example of Elk Grove. That's how, what this community's all about. It's unique. We only strive for the best for this community. And, um, these guys always do as all of our people do, so I wanna thank them. So I keep licking my lips and trying, irritating myself, I apologize. So, now we're gonna recognize the future leaders of Elk Grove. And, who's gonna? You're gonna be, okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay. Good evening and welcome to our, uh, annual youth recognition celebration for, uh, the children of the, uh, Elk Grove area. And tonight, we are, as we call up the groups, some of the, I know some of the people had to leave, so we have a, a few, few, um, people that will speak though for each group. Sure. Um, so anyway, we're from the, um, Community Character Coalition of Elk Grove. We support the Six Pillars of Character Counts. And we like to recognize, uh, people who, um, volunteer in the community. We do it for adults and tonight especially for the youth of our community. All the wonderful things that they do. Uh, it's so impressive and we're gonna let them tell you what they've done in their various different projects.
And we do have a, we do have a step, so if you look short, like I am, there's a step stool here. So you can just step on there as you talk, just talk to the microphone so we can hear you, okay? And that one gets a chocolate, that one gets a plaque or a certificate. So, just go and go and come up to that.
Okay, we're gonna start with the Leo Club. Okay, Samantha Sol.
You don't have to stand around here. Stand everyone, go ahead.
Thank you very much, okay. Um, the Elk Grove Village Leo Club is made up of students aged twelve through eighteen. Our big annual event held each fall is a cat and dog food and supply drive that benefits the Almost Home Foundation. We typically provide them with anywhere between five-hundred and one-thousand items that are donated and collected throughout the village. We recently began judging the village's Halloween house and Halloween holiday house decorating contest. We, we partner with our, our sponsor organization, the Elk Grove Village Lions Club, in organi- organizing and judging these new annual events. Our club also supports the Elk Grove Village Food Pantry with drives that provided much-needed liquid soap and canned goods for those in need. We partner with the Elk Grove Village Park District by volunteering time of our members at their annual Pioneer Days, Halloween Fest, and play picnic and party event that is put on by both of them and the village. An annual event that the Leos really look forward to is being able to service elves and helpers for Santa, the community tree lighting event right after Thanksgiving. Our most visible community event, however, was a project we did in this past year with some help from the Home Depot in support of our local VFW hall on Devon by Krispy Kreme. We beautified their parking lot by painting their large concrete blocks red, white, and blue, including names and insignias for each branch of the military. The leadership of the VFW was very impressed with our work and appreciative of how we improved the home for all their members, guests, and the community as they drive by. I would like to thank you, Mayor Johnson, the board, and the Community Character Coalition for including the Leo Club in tonight's recognition.
They do a great job, the Leo Club, they really do. Oh, yeah, wait, I'm sorry, we gotta get a picture. Wait, come here. You won't, sir. Come on, come on.
Okay, the next group that we're going to recognize is the Ruplee School Twenty-First Century Club. Mrs. Avina, would you come forward, please, with your students? First, we're gonna give these out. I'm gonna start with, um, Gianna Richards.
A.J. Cologne. America Aguilera. Hannah Campus. Daniela Contreras. Gina Fuentes. Abby Gonzalez. Yaslin Hymas. Owen Kane. Claire Crowick. Alyssa Magana. Brianna Moreno. Karen Rodriguez. Emma Sanders. And Ray Soto. Thank you.
Don't be nervous. See that camera? You know how many people are watching you right now? Don't worry, it's not me. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Alyssa and I am a member of the Twenty-First Century Club. Today I'm going to explain what we do and why we do it. To start off, we meet after school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm going to go back to when we started the club. We started off making posters for the Super Bowl and putting them around the school. We also made posters for bread tags and if we collected enough bread tags, we turned them into, so we can make a wheelchair. Fast forward a couple meetings later, we are, we are already making hearts to sell. After successfully selling hearts, we ended up here. Our club is growing every day and we are becoming better every step of the way.
Hi, my name is A.J. and I'm one of the many members in Twenty-First Century Club. This is a club that helps out the community and gives to many good causes. We have joined together to help change the world, world for the better. So we can all be successful in life. I think by being in Twenty-First Century Clubs, it means that I am part of something bigger than myself. Being in Twenty-First Century Club means helping the world be better to live on.
Good evening, my name is Tino Fuentes and I am a member of the Twenty-First Century Club. This club is all about participation and leadership. Everyone is part of this club. When we start working, we put all our differences behind us and work for a cause. Our club keeps growing. As of now, we have fifty members of, from all fifth-grade programs at Ruplee. We have built it to more than an, an exceptional club. We are way more than just kids working to make a good club. We are working on making a better school.
Anyone else?
My name is Emma and I think that Twenty-First Century Club made me a better person and that I wish we could keep it going. But since it's a limited time, we only get to do certain fun activities with our great, uh, what would you call it? Sponsor, Miss Avina. Thank you, Miss Avina.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one more, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Owen. I'm here from one of the fifty members of Twenty-First Century Club. The things that we do in Twenty-First Century Club include making hearts for Valentines to sell for a cause, making posters for the Super Bowl, and going to the se- uh, going to the senior village uh, to do a talent show for them, and many, many more oper- uh, great opportunities for us to make our school, ourselves, and the community a better place.
Okay, give him a big hand, good job.
One I shouldn't have men- mentioned before is, please feel free, after your group is recognized, uh, to leave if you need to. Thank you.
The next group is from Ruplee as well. These are the SEL leaders, if they would come forward, please.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Jenny Rodriguez. I'm the school social worker from Ruplee School. And we are honored to be able to join you this evening and we thank you so much for this opportunity to highlight our young leaders. Um, I am incredibly proud to be co-sponsor of this club, along with Ms. Taylor, um, who has, uh, been invaluable to me this year as a, a partner, as we honestly just kind of stand back and let these young people shine. Um, I know they will be very modest and they won't talk about, um, the enthusiasm they come with when they go and help kindergartners read. I know they're not going to remember that they're volunteering their recess and lunchtime to go help, um, educational, uh, life skill students learn appropriate play skills. You know, these are, um, uh, from their heart, they're giving their time, um, to help other people. And this is the kind of, uh, just sincere, innocent, um, good actions that we want to see in all communities, but especially in Elk Grove. So it is with great pleasure that I present, um, my friends to you. Um, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say to you about their leadership experience. Yashri Sri Barot. Kevin Fernandez. Yuritza Carrasco. Karen Rodriguez. Owen Kane. Edona Kadru. Jesús Gallegos. And Jose Contreras.
Hello, I'm Edona. I am an SEL leader. My favorite thing about being an SEL leader is helping others and, and meeting new people. Being an SEL leader has really taught me how to become a stronger leader by being more patient. I really enjoy being an SEL leader. It's been really fun and it's a great experience.
Uh, hi, my name is Kevin and I'm a part of the SEL leaders. SEL stands for Social Emotional Learning. That basically means that we help people a lot in our school and in our classrooms. Um, we give up our lunch and recess to help other people, like first sec- first, second, or kindergartners.
Hi, my name is Yashri Sri. I'm one of the members of the SEL Leader Club. And I'm really honored to be here and get a chance to speak. I really am thankful to Ms. Rodriguez and Ms. Taylor. I like being a SEL leader because I like meeting other people and helping them. Um, what we SEL leaders do is we give up our recess and lunchtime to help other kindergartners, first graders. And I really like all my jobs that I did so far. Thank you. Namaste.
That's it for Ruplee. Okay, thank you very much. Now, I was telling the students. Oh, yeah, we do that. I was telling our students, um, I went to school there. Um, I told them nineteen sixty-five, they go, when? When? Now, when I went to school, we called it Ruplee. Nowadays, they call it Ruplee. So, we'll have to debate that one. So let's get a picture, come on. Come on.
Our next group is from Byrd Elementary School. Uh, the students who collected, uh, pop can tabs for the Ronald McDonald Charity.
Emerson Blasco. Matthew Romanowski. And Elena Bookman. And Elena Bookman. And they're representing all the first and second graders at Admiral Byrd School.
The first and second grade classes at Admiral Byrd School are collecting pop tabs for the Ronald McDonald House in Winfield, Illinois. This is our third year collecting tabs. Our project is ongoing year after year. The first year we collected one hundred and sixty-nine, sixty-eight pounds equalling two hundred and twelve thousand and eight hundred and sixty-five tabs. The second year we collected tabs, we collected two hundred and fifty-five pounds equalling three hundred and twenty-three thousand and eighty-five tabs. This year we have collected one hundred and eighty-nine pounds so far equalling two hundred thousand, two hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four tabs. Tabs can come from any aluminum can, including soup cans, pop cans, cat food cans and more. The Ronald McDonald House helps pe- families by giving them a safe and comfortable place to live when, uh, when their child is sick in the hospital. Ronald McDonald House provides families with meals somewhere, somewhere cozy to sleep, a place to do laundry, a free toilet for every child and a group of people to support them while their loved one is in the hospital or getting treatment.
They take the donated pop tabs and recycle them to raise money to help with their costs. The actual cost to operate a room is anywhere between fifty and a hundred dollars a night. Families either stay at no cost or are asked to make a small donation up to ten dollars per day. However, payment is never expected for those who cannot afford it. We will be turning in this year's donation into the Ronald McDonald House around the middle of May. Our goal is to beat last year's collection of two hundred sixty-five pounds. We need sixty-six more pounds to beat our goal.
It has become a community effort to help us reach our goal. The Elk Grove Jewel, uh, Jewel has allowed us to put out a collection box for visitors to donate tabs on our behalf. We couldn't have collected this many tabs without their help. Shoppers have contributed one hundred sixty-five pounds of tabs throughout the past two years. Thank you to everyone who has dropped off any tabs in the collection bin. We have a long-term goal to eventually become part of the Thanks a Million program through the Ronald McDonald House. Groups who collect a million tabs receive a spec- a special certificate and recognition at the specific house for their achievement. We hope we get there by the end of the two thousand twenty and the two thousand twenty-one school year. We are seventy-seven percent of the way to that goal. Through collecting pop tabs, we have learned the power of run, one. When we pull together, we can make a difference and help the Ronald McDonald Charities. We hope you can all help us meet our goal and will start collecting on our behalf of the Admiral Byrd students. Please drop off your pop tab don- donations at the school.
That means these young people have collected so far seven hundred and seventy thousand pop tabs and they're gonna make a million by next year? That's it, that's impressive, come on, let's get a picture.
The next group is also from Byrd School, this is the Caps Collecting Project, also very impressive.
Hey, someone's birthday today?
It's not mine.
Someone's birthday.
Good evening and thanks so much for having us here tonight. My name is Bonnie Briggs and I'm the Fine Arts teacher at Admiral Byrd, I'm, suppose I'm the sponsor of this project and tonight I have with me a few of the hundreds of students at our school that helped participate in this program. So tonight we have Iris Bookman. Kaylee Romansky. Dylan Blasco. And Nicholas Salamanca. And they're gonna tell you a little bit about our goals and our project and everything we've done up to tonight.
Byrd students have been collecting caps all year. Students come to Mrs. Briggs's classroom during recess to sort through the caps. We check if they are dirty or clean. Caps also need to be recycling numbers two, four or five.
Cla- classrooms were competing to collect the most caps. Students bring their caps to class and put them in the class bag, where, when the bag is full, we feed the robot.
We are partnering with the Green Tree Plastics Company in Evansville, Indiana to turn our caps into recycled benches. We may even have enough caps for a picnic table and trash can. Recycling caps keeps plastic out of landfills and helps the environment. It's been really exciting to see how many students and families in our community are supporting our project.
The recycled products will go, will go in our school's new me- memory garden. This garden was created by an Eagle Scout and was planted in memory of two former Byrd teachers who passed away. We hope to dedicate the garden with its new recycled bench on Earth Day in a special ceremony. We'll keep you posted on the date and time if you'd like to come.
Our original cap collecting goal was five hundred pounds. We passed our goal by Thanksgiving. Our new goal was to collect one thousand pounds of caps. We now have a grand total of one, mm, total of one thousand four hundred and seven, seventy-two pounds of caps. Now that we have reached our goal, the winning class that has to collect the most caps will get to choose the color of the benches and picnic table we plan to get. They can be gray, red, blue, green or even rainbow. Students will be able to enjoy the recycled products for years to come.
Congratulations. Our next group is Girl Scout Troop twenty, forty-five, seven, four, four. And their leader, Mrs. Larkin, come forward, please.
These are some second graders, all in Elk Grove Village and, uh, we've been a troop for about three years, so Sloane Cas- um, Caselder, I guess I've never said your last name, good job, sweetie. Lily Namowitz. Melania Vespo. Isabel Hutchins. Ella Larkin. Elena Mens. Angelina Tapovic. Ella O'Malley. And Sophia Hutchins.
I am gonna speak on behalf of our troop, um, to just let you know a few of the things that we have done in Elk Grove community. Um, we donated to the Elk Grove Food Pantry, we did a trick or treat, um, food drive collecting. We've volunteered for packages for patriots. We helped clean up the litter at Bussy Woods. We collected items and money for an animal shelter. We made cards for children who were in the hospital. We donated Girl Scout cookies to the fire department. We sang at Alexian Village and we've participated in the Elk Grove Village Parade and most recently, we just started our Kindness Rock Project where the girls decorated rocks and they brought them to their schools to help promote inclusion and kindness in their schools. So at Clermont, Ruplee, Ridge and Byrd. And Salt Creek.
This is the group from Queen of the Rosary, if they'd come up, please.
Hello, I'm Randam Assi, I'm a co-sponsor for the Student Council at Queen of the Rosary and we have five of our representatives here this evening. Kate Delico. Emma Gomez. Molly Boyle. Amanda Petrick. And Sammy Hollerbach. And Molly will come up and tell you something about our work, their work.
Good evening, my name is Molly Boyle and I am the president of the Queen of the Rosary Student Council. Our Student Council has conducted various fundraisers and food drives that have benefited the Elk Grove residents, the Chicagoland area and our school. Throughout the school year, we have actively participated in the Saint James Monthly Food Drive, which benefits the Greater Chicago Food Depository. We have also participated in the Interfaith Food Drive that assists people in the Elk Grove community. We have collected over one thousand items for these charities these, this past school year. Our school also collects pop tabs that are donated to the Ronald McDonald House, which helps support children and families who are in need of hu- financial help. The Student Council participates in making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches for people in need of me- meals. Every month, the Student Council meets and makes about one hundred sandwiches for the Catholic charities and dispaines. The Student Council also helps during Queen of the Rosary's annual open house in January. We sell suckers to raise money for our school and help give toys to prospective families. Every month, the Student Council holds a Change for Change Day in which students may be out of uniform for the day if they bring a dollar. These days raise a lot of money, which we donate to charities or use to purchase new items for our school. Queen of the Rosary Student Council is a service organization. We are proud to be able to make contributions to our world, the Elk Grove community and our school, thank you.
Next group is the Prince of Peace Youth Group with, uh, Pia Straserna, she can come up, please.
Hi, I'm Mike Wysocki, I am the, uh, co-chair of, uh, the Youth Council at Prince of Peace United Methodist Church here in Elk Grove. Um, I've been working with the youth now for twenty years and, um, I've seen quite a few kids go through this program and, uh, they're all just a great bunch of kids, they have been and the tradition keeps going on, so I'd just like to start honoring some of them here, Aaliyah Jones. Here's one, a name that might be familiar, because you were just up here a little bit ago, Ella Larkin. Jay Morand. Dean Stapleton. Haley Stapleton. Sean Stapleton, also is a part of our group, but we don't have a certificate for you tonight, but we will get you one, for sure. We get two chocolates, that's even better. And then Isaac Wysocki. And this, uh, represents, um, probably about three quarters of, uh, the, the youth that are in our group. We ex- uh, we have quite a few others that couldn't be here this evening and, uh, my son Isaac is going to come up and talk a little bit about what our group does.
Good evening. Good evening, we're here from Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. Our group is very active in the community, in our country and globally. In our community, we collect food every Sunday for the Elk Grove and I task of food pantries. And our older youth help run the Vacation Bible School in July that is open to the public. In our country, we spend a week of our summer at a mission site, um, in many different states. Some of the states we have been to are Kentucky, Ohio, Arkansas, uh, Minnesota, Michigan and North Carolina. That's just a couple of them. We have had our week-long summer mission program for about sixteen years now and it's always a huge success. We've eaten, uh, we've even added a church, um, of the incarnation, U M C in Arlington Heights to our mission team and they have, uh, been looking to add other sister churches as well. Um, globally, we volunteer at Feed My Starving Children's a couple times a year. Where we make food packets, uh, that go to places all over the world, like Haiti, Peru, Djibouti and Masala, or Malaysia. Every month, um, that has a, um, a fifth Sunday at our church has a Mission in Action Day. Sometimes on these Sundays, we help to sort items that have been collected by our congregation, and they are sent to the United Meth- Methodist Corps on Relief, which is second only to the Red Cross when it comes to relief disaster sites in America and globally. Doing all these things makes us feel really good about being the hands and feet of Jesus here on earth and to the world that is so desperately in need. Thank you for your time.
The next group is Girl Scout Troop five-five-one-nine-one. You'd come up, please?
All right. I'll try not to be. Hello, my name is Denise Gogola. I am a Girl Scout leader for Cadet Troop five-five-one-nine-one. We are out of Itasca, but we are choosing to believe that's not why we're last on the agenda tonight. I have a bunch, a couple of girls here with me tonight. We have seven girls in our troop in sixth grade at Peacock Middle School. We have three representing us tonight, and Lily will tell you about our work. I will give them their certificates first. We have Sophia Gorillo. Lily Kent. And Olivia Sablotny. Okay, Lily will tell you about our work.
We are Girl Scout Cadet Troop five-five-one-nine-one from Itasca, but we do a lot of service work in Elk Grove. Most recently, we set up a group, or we set up it for a carnival at Exceptional Character, but we also donate a full meal for thirty-five to forty yearly to Pads. Our Bronze Award project completed over the summer included making activity kits for kids in the homeless shel- shelters, and growing fresh vegetables for Pads. We also had a group make blankets for Almost Home Dog Shelter and donate food and treats. We hope that we, along with all the Girl Scouts that are making the world a better place. Thank you.
This is our Eagle Scout. Matthew McCurryo. With another very impressive project. Matthew, if you will tell us a little bit about what you did.
Good evening. My name's Matthew, and this summer at Bird Elementary School, I put in a perennial memory garden to honor two of the teachers at Bird that had passed away. And I did it in the shape of a Mickey head with a peace sign paver walkway, because the two teachers really liked Disney and then the peace sign. And, um, it's been really good to see some of the pictures of the students using the garden. They use it for, um, the, to go out there and read and do different activities out there. And, uh, I think, I just wanted to thank as well Ms. Esser, the principal, and the school district for the opportunity to do my project there.
And the next group is the St. Julian Aftermas- you- Aftermath Mass Youth Group. Sorry.
Good evening. Um, I'm the Youth Minister of St. Julian, and soon to be both St. Julian and Queen of the Rosary. We do have members from both churches now, um, to be merged, uh, by the Archdiocese. In any case, um, the Aftermass Youth Group is roughly about twelve years old, and we've got, this is a small smattering of the, uh, the membership, which is at least twenty-six members. And most of them are high school members. Some of them are even in early college, and they go down as young as seventh grade. And we've got one member who's a little bit younger, who's, uh, been working very hard with us this year. Um, basically, the Aftermass Youth Group is, um, largely involved in some, some of the community, uh, work throughout the year, doing, uh, visits to the elderly at Alexian Village twice a month. And we do work at Feed My Starving Children several times a year. We do performing and babysitting at the, and we do the, um, a Christmas stockings delivery to the Queen, uh, Mission of Our Lady of the Angels, uh, down in Chicago, uh, among other things, both in the parish and throughout the community. And then we culminate once a year with a one-week mission trip to some state somewhere through the Catholic Heart Work Camp, uh, where the kids get a chance to work and do, um, home improvements, uh, all kinds of, uh, mission work involving shelters, uh, the poor and the indigent, and really help people. And they get a chance to actually spend time with the poor and find out who they're actually doing the help for. And some of these younger members here are, um, doing some of that works, and some of them will be going for the mission trip for the first time this year, which is go- headed to Farmington, Michigan, um, for the first time. We went to Nashville last year. In any case, um, Casey Waddes. Kevin Kazer. Jovan Segura. Seemed to be a missing one. Darren Waddes. Oh, I gave it to you. All right, he's got it. Darren, come and get your. And last but not least, Elizabeth Kazer. Elizabeth's a future member, but she wants to talk for us.
I'm happy to be in this group to at least go to one place, Alexian Village. I am happy to see their smiles on their faces whenever I go and play games with them. My brother Kevin and my brother's friend Jovan, they help me a lot, and my brother takes care of me when I go. And I like, I always, whenever one old person needs help, I hel- I go and I help them. Sometimes when there's too many, I would tell my brother or mom, because my mom would go with me sometimes there to help, and I would tell them if, to go help them.
You're in third grade? Wow.
Wow, that's good. Good, good picture.
Good for you.
And last but not least, Boy Scout Troop four-nine-five. Please welcome them. Come on up, guys. Okay, this is for Jacob. Jacob, what's your lesson? Kevin O'Hara. Carl, I'm sorry, or Cal, what's your lesson, Jacob? And Dylan Demony. Okay. Who would like to say something?
So, uh, we're Troop four-nine-five, and some community service we do every year is we help at the Christus Vic- the Christus Victor Thanksgiving Dinner for elderly and disabled people. And, um, we help at the Memorial Day Service.
Hello, my name is Jacob. Um, uh, one, uh, community service that we do each year is we help at Rotary Fest, uh, uh, emptying garbage cans. Um, we also, uh, go to Feed My Starving Children to help pack food for people in countries who don't have some.
The guy who's been blamed for throwing the garbage every year is right down there, Trustee Schmidt. He started it with the Scouts years ago. Anybody else want to say anything? We're good? Okay, give him a big hand.
When you're as old as I am, you don't talk about that.
Before, before they go, because they do a lot of work with Character Coalition. Let's sing her a big happy birthday, okay? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Nancy. Happy birthday to you.
Well, thank you. That was lovely. Oh, my goodness.
Birthday girl.
She just said seven million people know it's my birthday today. But I just want to thank you, Mayor and the board, for, uh, hosting this once again. It's always such a delight to be here and recognize these kids and all the great work they do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Character Coalition. Good job. Thank you. Give him a hand. Okay, um, that concludes the, uh, and it's not all me being windy tonight. Apparently not. Thank you. Uh, trustee's report, we'll start with trustee Feiter.
Yes, sir. Uh, the couple of things I wanted to report on, about a week and a half ago, the, um, our Bulgarian friends, as many of you know, we have a very special relationship with Bulgaria. But our Bulgarian, the actually Consul General Bulgaria invited me, invited Tom Robb from the Journal, uh, to come to a special event at the Union League, uh, League Club downtown Chicago to celebrate Bulgarian Liberation Day. And that day is about the time when the Russians threw the Turks out of Bulgaria, and the country was liberated. And so they make it a national holiday. And we had a really good time down there. Great food, uh, friendly, nice atmosphere, nice, uh, uh, the whole thing, nice music. The Consul General Anchev, uh, told me that he will be leaving, uh, here. He's the one who helped with Mayor Johnson, uh, start our relationship with Bulgaria about a year and a half ago, or two years ago. And he, um, he'll be leaving, going back to Bulgaria and taking a new station there. And, uh, we'll be getting a new Consul General from there. We don't know who he is yet, but we do thank him for all the good things he's done. And, uh, secondly, I want to mention that Meet Chicago Northwest is having its Restaurant Week. Now Restaurant Week is kind of a big deal for restaurants, because they want to, this time of year, they need business especially. Chicago has a huge Restaurant Week event later on, and we have one that's go- just started, going on now. And it'll be good until the fifteenth. Twenty restaurants in the area of Schaumburg, Elk Grove, Itasca, Arlington Heights are all participating in it. Three in Elk Grove, uh, real-time, Tell Papa and Sweet Baby Ray's. What does this mean? They have a special menu for lunch and for dinner. You come in, you'll see the special menu. I know Tell Papa's got it right on their door. And it's, until the fifteenth, they have this in order to try to get more business and promote their restaurant. So if you're thinking about going to something like that, you might think about going to one of our Restaurant Ri- Week partners. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I apologize I interrupted. Doctor, Dr. Holman, come on down. My bad. I should have had him come down earlier. I know he's got a part of work tomorrow. Come on down, doctor. My apology. Um, as you know, Doctor did a special thing for residents last year. He'd like to talk a little about this coming year's special project. Why don't you explain again? Go ahead. Thank you.
So last year, we did the, um, our first ever Free Dental Day. We had myself, um, two of my hygienists, my whole team, uh, oral surgeon Mark Spinazi from Elk Grove, and, uh, the periodontist Jennifer Silk from Schaumburg. Um, we did over twenty-eight thousand dollars' worth of free care for people in Elk Grove and the surrounding communities. And we are going to be doing it again this year. We're going to be adding another general dentist to be determined, but, um, so we'll have an extra person helping us. So we should have more capacity. Likely, we'll hopefully see more people, because the word will get spread. And I just came to announce the date is going to be August twenty-eighth on Friday, so.
So Friday, August twenty, he's going to do it again. His practice right there at Arlington Road in Devon. He did a great job last year. Talk about character. Here's again, remember, Character Coalition, showing good character and all this. So, Doctor, I show back, because I apologize. I, um, got tripped up, so. Is that good giving a dentist candy? That's good. Gives out the best candy at Halloween. Gives out candy and, you know, cards, so, you know, go to. Okay, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone the Frank Zarnik, Jim Heffron Memorial Scholarship applications are now available. They're online at zarnikgolf.com or on the Village website. They're also in the high schools. Uh, there are eight one-thousand-dollar scholarship awards. They're available for graduating students of Elk Grove Village who are continuing their education. Applications are due by May fourth, twenty-twenty, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Trustee listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the, uh, March fifth, that was the same day as the Volunteer Recognition Dinner, I attended the G O A Business Expo and spent quite a bit of time at the Elk Grove booth manned by Josh Grozen and Nick Radlet. And I even helped someone. He was, he came along looking for property in Rockford, so I was able to tell him where to go. Yeah, so, eh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Prochnow.
Uh, just a friendly reminder that we still have the winter market going on at Christus Victor Church on the first and third Saturdays of the month, um, from eight AM to one PM. The market will run through, through the end of May, so it'll go right from the outside market into the, the summer market. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Schmidt.
Yes, the Elk Grove Village Italian Sister Cities met last night, um, to discuss the second phase of our, uh, student exchange. Our students had traveled to, our, sorry, we had students from Italy here in, uh, November. Our students had traveled to, our, sorry, we had students from Italy here in November, and it was our 10th exchange. We had some special venture, and we had a plan to send our students there on March 19th for a Tete University Celebration and Student Exchange in Termini Amarese. But unfortunately, due to the Corona's outbreak, we had a meeting last night with the students, with the parents. Paul Kelly from the high school was there, and we had a travel agent, and it was decided last night that we are not going to cancel our trip, but rather postpone the trip. And hoping that sometime during the summer, this Corona's outbreak will stop or slow down to the point where we will be able to send the students over to Italy so that they can experience the second half of our exchange. So the next time we're going to meet is April 13th, and we'll have an update hopefully on the coronavirus outbreak there. As you all know, if you've been following the news, that the entire country of Italy is on a shutdown or lockdown until at least April 3rd. And also, I'd like to congratulate Chief Michael and the Elk Grove Fire Department. Glad to see you're following the footsteps of the police department.
Very good. We move on to now the accounts payable warrant, first February 29th, 2020.
I move we accept the current payable warrant for February 29th, 2020 in the amount of $1,725,879.67.
Second, motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Listener, without objection, court of votes demonstrated five to nothing. We have on March 10th, 2020.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant of March 10th, 2020 in the amount of $662,958.90.
Second, motion by Trustee Zarnik, second by Trustee Listener, without objection, court of votes demonstrated five to nothing. There's no regular agenda, we took care of the plant commission, no zoning board, move on to Youth Committee. Trustee Frankie's not here, anybody have a report for him?
Just a reminder that the Elk Grove Youth Committee is offering seven $1,000 scholarships to Elk Grove residents who are seniors in high school. You can go to the Village website at elkrove.org to apply, the deadline is May 1st. And this is in conjunction with the Elk Grove Park District and the Village together, and that concludes his report.
Thank you. Business Leaders forums, Trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of visits in the last week or so, couple weeks. On February 25th, we visited Jeet Incorporated. They provide industrial power washing and cleaning services. Tape case, supplier and converter of 3M tape and abrasives and adhesives. They take rolls of tape that, God, they're the size of this Deas, and they break them down into little rolls of duct tape and stuff. It's a, and they sell to a lot of distributors. On March 3rd, Van Dorn Roofing, specializing in replacement of commercial, industrial, retail, and condominium roof systems. And on March 4th, we visited Arden Courts, which was really quite an interesting thing, there were these, it's behind manicure, yeah, it's, you wouldn't see it if you didn't go back there, but there are these little apartments for people that are battling Alzheimer's and dementia, and it's really a great organization, and it's really, it's got a very warm feeling. And even though it was a little bit out of our normal visits, it was quite enjoyable. And upcoming visits, on March 12th, Chemco, they do trade show transportation and local trucking. Trade shows have been hit quite a bit during this virus problem, so be interesting to talk to them. AMSI on March 25th, they create business software solutions. And on March 30th, Frank Cooney Company, they make educational furniture. And today at Enclave, they had class number three of the Makers Wanted Workshop. Was that me? I should add that at the GOA Expo, several people, businesses that are attending the Makers Wanted Workshop were there, and they said they're finding the classes very challenging and very useful, and that was good to hear. And on March 18th is the masterclass at Enclave, and the presenter is David Bardos, who's President and CEO of FPE Automation. Oddly enough, that's one of the companies we visited in February. And John Dallas, naturally, was along, and he was so impressed by David that he asked him to come and speak to the masterclass on March 18th, so hopefully we can make that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Television Committee, Trustee Listener.
Well, as I said earlier, Mr. Mayor, I've gotten a couple calls from customers of Comcast wondering what's going on with this Marquee Network and their agreement between Comcast and Marquee. I guess it's a ongoing discussion, it's really just around pricing issues, and hopefully they'll work it out before the season starts. There's spring training going on, but.
Marquee, for people who don't know, is the Chicago Cubs television network.
That's correct. I, I think it's, I think it's Sinclair Radio that runs it, but, or Sinclair Broadcasting. But it's, it's, they're having the same problems they had with the Yankees and the Dodgers when they first started. I'm sure, sure it'll work out, and if not, the White Sox are on Channel 9 if you want to watch them. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Sam. So what this would mean if they make an agreement is that everybody that's a Comcast customer, whether they like to watch baseball or not, would have to pay this fee?
Well, that's one of the discussion items. There's nothing been agreed on. So that could be one of them, or maybe a special charge for just people that want to take it, like, like they do with some of the HBO and channels out there. So it might be that way, it might be another way.
The odds are, usually when they do it, Trustee Feiter is, it's a flat fee for everyone.
For everyone, yeah.
Whereas a team like that.
Do we have any vote on that? Do we have any input?
No.
No, that's what I thought.
You don't have to buy, you don't have to buy Comcast.
Yeah.
You buy AT&amp;T, but anyone that has them is going to be paying their fee.
Yeah.
And if anyone's going to get a good deal, it'll probably be Comcast, because they're the biggest out there, so.
Yeah, it's, well, we all like the Cubs, so hopefully, see, work something out.
Keep your fingers crossed. Is that it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, Health and Community Services, Trustee Zarnik.
Just want to remind you to put on your calendars, the next blood drive is April 11th, and it will be from 8:00 a.m. till noon, lower level of the Zedek Municipal Conference. And we definitely always can use volunteers to donate for blood. That is something that really will help everyone. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, Trustee Listener.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder, the next Neighborhood Watch program is scheduled for March 11th at 6:30 p.m. in Room E in the Village Hall. And the Public Works Citizens Academy is accepting applications now for their inaugural Citizens Academy. It's going to meet on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for four weeks, beginning April 22nd. I hope everyone gets a chance, it should be a great thing to sign up for. I think they've put together a great program from what I've read, so you may want to sign up before it fills up. If you need information, there's more on the Village website, there's information and an application. Or you could contact Brian Southey at 847-734-8067. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Recycling and Waste Committee, Trustee Feiter.
Yes, about a month ago, we agreed, the Board agreed to pursue textile recycling in Elk Grove Village. And it was on our consent agenda tonight, the agreement. And during this month of March, you'll be receiving at your door something that will look like this. And it will have all the information in it, it's a bag that you can put your textiles if you wish to discard them in the bag. And you can put it out by, when it's full, you put it out by, on your day the garbage picks up. They'll come, somebody will come by and pick it up that day. It won't be picked up with your regular garbage, but they will notify this company that you have a bag out there, they will come by and pick it up and give you a new bag. You can, this is voluntary, doesn't cost you anything. It's a nice program, because an awful lot of what we throw away are textiles. And this is not just clothing, anything that you have, old towels, anything like that could be put in. Purses, wallets, shoes, any of those things, they will recycle it. So you'll be getting this at your door sometime this month, and the program will get started. It's a good program, there's no loss here. If you still want to give all your clothing and so forth to Salvation Army or Wings, go ahead and do it, no problem. So it's totally voluntary, but they do recycle it, and it goes to good use. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move on now to Trustee Zarnik for parade committee.
My Favorite Things is the theme for the Hometown Parade. It is Saturday, September 19th. You have a lot of ideas that you can use for that, for your units. Applications are sent out now, please participate and send your application in as soon as possible. The Community Character Coalition is a grand marshal for the parade, and so we want to express how fortunate we are to have that organization and all the work they do for us. Our next parade meeting is Monday, April 6th at 5:30 p.m., Room E of the Zedek Municipal Building. concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Trustee Frankie's not here, anybody have a report for him?
No report.
Nope. Judiciary Planning and Zoning Committee, Trustee Prochnow.
No report.
Capital Improvements Committee, Trustee Zarnik.
I just want to advise you that as of March 6th, the residential water meter exchanges, they've been completed to the tune of 120 of the 12,370 exchanges, and this is underway. There are a few meters that were not able to be exchanged due to inoperable shut-off valves in the home, and a small number judged to be difficult due to conflicts with water heaters, furnaces, or being too close to the water meter. Those things will be done at a more convenient time, and that concludes my report.
Pardon?
I never heard they, they haven't gotten around to meeting.
No, they're, they are doing it by billing zones.
Okay.
So you didn't get your postcard yet to set up an appointment.
Okay. Okay. There's no airport update at this time, Midsummer Consta Classic Series. Mr. Payne did not know any of them.
He didn't?
No. Now, how is he well-prepped? A good attorney would prep his replacement fully.
Well, good.
But then again, I got, I got, I guess you're, I just, I, that's oxymoron to say that, I guess, so that's my bad.
That's a big word for you.
It's a very big word. By the way, he did set a record, Mr. Payne, a six-syllable word.
He did.
Six-syllable word, and I could even pronounce it, that's what's scary.
Now, that's, that's the scary part.
Six syllable.
What was it?
So the fill-in attorney came up with a six-syllable word.
Yeah, we heard that, we heard that.
And we have, I think we have our budget next week, we talk salaries next week.
Ooh.
Yeah. I would like to be in Mr. Payne's shoes next week.
Oh.
It started with an A.
Oh, after disestablishment of terrorism?
No.
Oh, that's pretty good.
No, it's not, that's a made-up word.
Minor detail.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, we're going to remember that next week. Now, if Mr. Nekavak wants to stop by next week during the budget hearing, we would be willing to give you some differentiation.
We can talk about it.
Yeah, we'll make sure to cover that. Okay, so the bands, once again, Mr. Nekavak is only, let's see, four months away. Our third band.
Is it Arkie the Arkansas Woodshopper? Perhaps not.
You better be here next week, that's what I'd say, you better. Third band.
Brett Michaels.
First band.
Daughtry.
Fifth band.
Arkie the Arkans-
Second band.
Casey and the Sunshine Band.
And the last one, but not least.
The Beach Boys.
Mike Love. Okay, so that will come up soon. Special Affairs Committee, Trustee Prochnow, that's our next one, will be.
Memorial Day.
Inside, rain or shine.
Inside.
Um, no liquor commission meeting, report from our beloved Village Manager.
Uh, no report this evening from your beloved Village Manager.
By the way, while I'm thinking of it, I need comparisons for you and the attorney. I wish you'd check the towns down in southern Mississippi for the manager. And for the attorney, I would like the unnamed Fijian Islands.
He doesn't do that well.
He will do better than you, but, okay, let's see, there's nothing on the Village Attorney? Boy, I didn't say that about Mr. Payne, but I do say about you, wow.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Nothing. Uh, report from Village Clerk.
Just a reminder, Elk Grove is an early voting site. Early voting continues this week, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday is 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday is 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then finally, Monday will be 9:00 to 5:00 here at Village Hall. And then the polling places open on the 17th at 6:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m.
And the guys are saying that they have way more than last year.
Yes.
They are, people are asking about the referendum question. You can still vote it, it won't be counted.
Correct.
Won't be counted, but if you feel good voting, by all means, you can still vote. But they did say that referendum question is definitely drawing the people out still, so it makes you feel good. And the way they're answering is making you feel even better. Okay, is there any unfinished or new business for the Board? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Wow, look where Mr. Petzel's sitting.
I know, I was noticing that earlier.
He's front row.
Yes, he is.
Wow, he's moving up.
Sacrificed for the children, so they guess he's supposed to sit.
No, no, he's front row, because I noticed Chris and Tom are kind of asking a lot of questions, so he must be helping write their stories. You writing the stories for him, Mr. Petzel?
No, I'm just helping him. He's looking to move up there.
Okay, sorry, George, he pointed to you.
Oh, I thought it was Trustee Candidate Petzel.
There's an open chair down there.
How did Mr. Nekavak do tonight?
Excellent for Tuesday.
Yeah, that's right. He missed last meeting, he's here today, he's going to miss the next meeting. Two out of three.
This is good.
That's good. Helen, again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much, that was very nice, appreciate it.
You did a very nice job, thank you for providing everything.
It worked out very well, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? Mr. Sax, everything good?
Everything's good.
I'd like to hear that. Okay, if nothing, I need a motion, actually not that bad considering all the kids.
No, not too bad.
I need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Trustee Listener, second by Trustee Feiter. Lori, call the rope, I came so close saying.
You did.
Whatever I said.
I'm meeting adjourned.
No.
Then what?
I almost said Judy. I came so close to almost saying Judy. I caught it, though. Lori, can you call the rope, please?
That would be a compliment. Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Meeting motion to adjourn, pacify nothing, folks have a good evening, see you in two weeks, meeting. Adjourn.